...to God, for the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone tonight to a joint meeting of the planning board and the selectmen. I'd like to apologize for not having a voice. It probably links up to the fact I might not be as bright as I usually am. We're waiting right now for... We're going to proceed with some selectmen's business because obviously we have 7:15 to carry. We are also waiting for Jeanne for a ruling right now. We are missing one member of the Selectmen's Board. And if that member of the Selectmen's Board cannot watch this meeting on TV and participate in the vote where it's a supermajority for us, which means four out of five, that would put an undue burden on the applicant and he might want to withdraw from tonight's meeting. So we should have that ruling before 7:15. So we're going to proceed with some maintenance business if this is what we have to do while we're waiting for Jeanne to come back to us who is at town council. I have a report that shows you my wisdom. I've signed the payroll account and I've signed the vendor account. So that's my report. We also have as part of our agenda what's called meeting updates. And Damon went to a meeting that we have... We started this where one selectman has a meeting on a Saturday and he meets with residents and he gets some feedback. So especially make this more.
All right. So I did a special selectmen's coffee hour on a Thursday night rather than a Saturday. It was on June 22nd out at Pitta Hall in an effort to try and hit all the different areas of town. It was only lightly attended. We only had three people show up. I don't know if it wasn't well enough advertised or if it was too nice a day out or if evenings not a good time for most people to drink coffee. I loved it. But what I heard from the residents who showed up is that there's been a lot of appreciation of Center Island and the beautification effort that's gone on there. People appreciate that there's a section for resident parking that is designated for residents only. There were questions brought up about beach property, where that ends and begins, which I could not answer. I've talked to Doug about it. And the question is always, how far onto the beach do individuals' property rights go? And this was in relation to dogs and trash and other things as far as our town regulations versus personal private property rights. There's also a contradiction in our bylaw about dogs that was brought up. The concern over the fact that we do not have lifeguards was brought up. There was praise for the current trash removal system which seems to be working with the exception of the first big heavy weekend or not heavy, heavy traffic weekend where it was high heat. There was concern that parking on Sunset Boulevard might be poisoning the marsh and causing erosion. So I don't know if that's something we won't ask either Merrimack Valley to look into or talk to Doug about. There was concern about the, on the busy days, the overflow parking on Plum Island Turnpike at Bob Lobster and how that creates sort of a hazard because everyone's going very quickly on the turnpike. There are runners, bikers, people crossing the road. And then there was a question about whether or not the town should create a rainy day fund to help with future building expenses, other expenses that are sort of those large capital expenses that are very hard to raise money for.
Need meaning for the dialogue or period?
Period. Just for the town's financial planning, would it be something that would be beneficial? And it's something that I've talked to Tracy about in the past to try and, you know, if we start raising money well before we go to reporters, it doesn't make sense. And then there's always the concerns of our older residents who are on a fixed income about the expenses of the town, the budget for the town, and how to essentially help people stay in town when they're on a fixed income. But our expenses as a town keep increasing and so their burden also increases. And so those were the issues that we talked about. Like I said, it was not mutually intended. I don't know if that was because it was an evening or just because it was a beautiful day out. But, you know, the last one I did had close to 15 people. This one had three.
Coffee, martini.
We want to do a martini hour. I'll do it tomorrow.
All right. So Mr. Chairman, I have some boards and committee reports that I can give, too. Last Friday, now Wednesday, I attended a planning board meeting because the Merrimack Valley Regional Rantin... Planning Commission was there. Remember she came to us and talked about housing? Well, she is having a, I think it's the working group that you're talking about.
The working group, right.
Yeah. So I attended to that and I'm going to tell you something. That's very good. They're looking at housing, which Newbury has an issue with. But they're looking at it regionally all the way from, you know, from Lawrence up to December. It's all good. So I think that what they're going to give us, I think citizens should come and give their input because you will be heard and it will be part of a written document. You do have a voice, you just need to use it. So I did that, I did that. And I also have a report from the REAP Committee. I attended the Recreation Committee meeting last night. And they, they have been tasked by us to give a report on Young Master Ablohse, Cole Ablohse, Town of Newbury thing wants to do over there at the Green. I attended a, the REAP Committee meeting when he presented to that committee. And the information he presented them is a little different than what we got presented to us.
He's probably matured, this is kind of...
Could have been, but so the feeling is that, if the REAP Committee is going to be tasked with giving a recommendation and the task, the idea is to have, ask them to come back and have a joint meeting almost with the REAP Committee end up and have them present. And I think Jane should be here. And I think possibly Doug because they're talking about draining the pond and doing the green work on and stuff. So I think I would like, and I know that he wants to get going on this, so I'm thinking that it might be a good idea maybe towards the end of summer. I don't know what our July schedule looks like, Alan, but we could have that on and have like a joint meeting with the REAP Committee to have them present. And then we could give them all of our feedback and then see how he wants to proceed.
And is this for the upper green?
Yeah.
I think we should also invite the Historic Society then.
Yes.
All the boards have been notified, I believe, all of them. Very quickly, before I talk to Jeanne, Eric, you have two minutes or you're going to have to wait for the whole meeting.
I'll do it in one minute.
And announce yourself and what you're going to...
Eric's on, chair of the OPM Designer Selection Committee. So the Designer Selection Committee has announced before we made our request for the selection of an OPM over its project manager. We created an advertisement for the state laws and regulations. We advertised, we had about 20 inquiries. We had seven or so proposal submitted to us. We reviewed those, vetted those. And last Friday, we interviewed four qualified candidates to do that. We ranked them one through four. We haven't made an announcement yet. I don't want to tell you exactly who, what the order is, but they're all qualified to do it. We've ranked them one through four. We're still calling and checking references now. When the references check out, we'll have a list of one through four and then it'll be turned over to Tracy and Tracy will start the negotiations.
Right on.
So.
Thank you.
Progress once again.
Jeanne?
Yes, it's fine. You can sign them all in certification.
Would you try to tell everyone surveillance gear so it's not...
Sure. So under the...
Town council, by the way.
Jeanne Kramer. Under the open meeting law, any voting member of a board or committee is allowed to miss just a single of the hearings, a single night of the public hearing as long as they sign a certification that they have reviewed, you know, watched the tape of the meeting plus reviewed all of the evidence and comments submitted. So Chuck Baer is eligible to do that, sign a Mullen Rule of Certification, which I can provide to him after he's gone through all the materials. And that way, he will be allowed to be a voting member of the board.
All right. So that seems sufficient to proceed. You're okay?
Before we move to the public hearing, are we going to make a motion to authorize Tracy to convene negotiations based on OPM slash committee's recommendations?
Let's do that in the regular meeting.
Okay.
From the Board of Selectmen, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing. Second.
Is there discussion? Are those in favor? John, from the Planning Board, I would need the ability for your meeting to be open and also to...
So I can open the public meeting by saying that the meeting of June 27th for the joint public hearing of the Planning Board is now in session and that the planning board members are behind me here. The town planner for the town is sitting at the end of the table. And we are ready to proceed.
Thank you so much. And now we would like the clerk of the Board of Selectmen to read the legal notice.
Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, June 27, 2017, at 7:15 p.m. in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass. 1092, the Newbury Board of Selectmen and the Newbury Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing to consider applications for a special permit for recreational use in the residential agricultural district. Board of Selectmen and the Site Plan Review Planning Board. Submitted by Eric Sorensen, applicant for the development of a proposed golf center with associated amenities at 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Assessors' maps are 43 lots 2, 11, and 4B, as shown on the drawing entitled 131-133-151 Scotland Road. Assessors' map are R43-lot 2, 11, and E. Permit plans set dated May 23, 2017, and May 31, 2017, and described in supporting documents prepared by Meridian Associates. The applications are on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk, in the Selectmen's office, and in the Planning Office, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass. For more information, contact the Selectmen's Office at 978-465-0862, extension 301, or the Planning Office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the time and place designated above.
Eric, do you have the green certified mailing codes and legal ad tear sheets in Daily News, please?
Yeah. They're on my desk at work. We have them all, all returned and copied so we remember everything.
All right. The town council says that's not a deal breaker and certainly with all the people here and watching.
They will be here tomorrow.
Can that's a...
Yeah, I know, absolutely. Yep.
Don't worry, I'll make a few tonight. I'd like to set the rules for tonight. We're going to remain strictly in order. And as we proceed, the board will probably have the ability, or the boards because it's a joint meeting, will have the ability to ask questions and then the folks who have come tonight certainly have the right to ask questions. As you ask questions, you will come to the front so you're picked up on cameras and you'll have to probably stand somewhere over there and you'll state your name and your address. Other than that, is there anything I've missed? Martha?
The one thing I'd add is that there are two microphones in the back, so if you're mumbling or cursing, you will be picked up and broadcast. Makes more entertainment for everyone at home. You should just be aware.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Once again, I apologize for my voice and we'll see you all on the last. I'd like to clarify once again that this is a joint meeting between the Planning Board who is going to have the ability, if we pass the special permit, to head into Site Plan Review because it triggers that as part of our bylaws. So we're in position to review this as a special permit because of its nonability to exist where it's trying to exist, how's that? So that being said, unless anyone from my board has anything to add, Martha, John, anyone? I would ask Eric if you guys are ready to start your presentations.
So it said over here would be a better place to say?
I mean, you're fine, we're uncomfortable. Just make, yeah, you're going to have a back, so maybe stand...
No, because the video...
Let's give it a good camera.
It will be over here.
Okay.
How did that go?
Just told me I'm in the way. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you get tired, you can sit in charge.
Both the Selectmen and the Planning Board appreciate your time. My note back from Meridian Associates for the record, I went with the tide as my associate, Dr. Trager. She's the project landscape architect, excuse me, and applicant, Eric Kramer. And we're here tonight, as you said, to present the... Sorry, Eric's... I'm clustered from having forgotten to... We're here to present the application, both special permit application to the Board of Selectmen and Site Plan Review of the Planning Board for a proposed driving range center at 131 and 133 from 151 Scotland Road.
And just for clarification, this is probably more basically for the special permit because Martha, won't they come to your board separately with a separate presentation for the recliners for Site Plan Review?
It's a ceremony.
Okay, good. Awesome. And that's good, thanks. Thanks for clarification.
Well, I'll try to...
See, I told you I'd mess up.
I think I'm still blowing up on you. So I'll run through the plans as you're seeing them. We did receive a comment letter from the peer review of the RSEC after the quick presentation. I'll also have Eric say a few words in regards to the overall operations of the proposed facility. So it's... So we have an existing site. Don't put the laser paintwork on the tower. We're going to give it a try. So we have an existing home and driveway here. We're showing this blown up portion of Lot 11, which is 131. This is the entire site here. This is Lot 11 and Lot 4B. About 27 acres. Slopes to and from the road towards Scotland, towards the back. We do have some resource areas. We've also been in front of conservation places now. I feel like we're in a pretty good place with them, but I'll touch on them when we stand with them in a moment. The resource areas are shown, existing just so you, everyone is on the same page. These four resource areas here were filed a few years ago under an A-Rat for conservation. As part of our supplemental conservation, we went ahead and finished delineation on this wetland and this front wetland here. So we feel as though we've got all the resource areas that is delineated conservation seems to be on the same page there. So as we said, this is an application for a proposed driving range. Pretty simple layout, typical driving range. We have an entrance, drive entrance here. We've mimicked the location of the drive entrance from the existing note.
When you say here, where are you...
We can't see the point.
The pointer's not working.
Oh.
Pointer's not working.
Okay. I can see it, it just must be the angle. So we'll have...
Vanna.
I wasn't saying. So we've mimicked the existing location of the driveway rate and we're just widening it. We're going to extend back about 600 feet and that's going to be the main parking area. We've put majority of the parking area to the, to the east, sorry, west. And a small section, again, to the east as well. There's going to be a small pro shop and the pro shop will serve as a place for physical operations, some light sales in terms of equipment. And there'll also be ice cream sold there as well. And that's part of the, other piece of the special permit that we're normally fully used to the use within the use of the ice cream sales. 30 artificial tees shown to the south of the parking area. And then those will be concrete. And then we have a large green area to the south of that. That is the natural tees. Yeah, up there. The reason for the large area of that is obviously with the natural tees, we're going to have to, we're going to have to move the mats around to keep the grass low. So those will vary, but they won't really go out of that box. The rest of the site will be obviously the driving range area. But as we move to the north, back towards the road, we've got a storm drainage collection system that shows the infiltration basin there. We're also, we also developed what will be essentially an ornamental pond area. It will accept water and there's a small flow in a 100-year storm, but it's actually not part of the stormwater management system. It's really just a miniature golf course look in terms of waters, you know, traps and greens. And in the very front, as part of, the third part of the special permit is, is going to have a membership where the members will be allowed to access the putty green and chipping green areas. And those are also going to serve as kind of an eye catch for people going along Scotland Road. We do have a small sign proposed, but those were really more of the features that we're going to use to try to catch the passing traffic. The rest of the site, if we go to the next, expand the site here as you saw before. This is a blow up of the smaller map we saw. We're going to do a fair amount of grading. We have made a very conscious effort to try to keep this a balanced site. This is more to the site plan. But the only material that's planned to be brought in is the material that's needed for stormwater, for septic, for fill-in and the parking areas. Areas where we can't just use onsite material. Other than that, we've really tried to balance the site to minimize any truck trips on and off. We've also tried to create a larger, as large as we can, clump of natural trees around the site. They do vary in size. The plus or minus of numbers on those sites are the middle. So in some areas, they'd be 75, plus or minus 50, plus or minus. They taper back and forth, but they, in those areas, they don't know how or whether those numbers listed. We've heard a lot of input from the butters, both at formal and informal meetings. Eric has met, be on that with the directed butters to try to get a lot of their concerns and try to address as many as we possibly can. The green pieces you see on there are the target greens. Again, that is to focus the direction of people heading involved in the middle of the site. Again, to certainly lessen the impact of anything to the butters as well. This is just a lighter scale. A little bit more detail, hopefully you can see. Again, we have the areas of the, the resource areas we're protecting. We also are creating, looks like a hole in the back that is actually going to be a depression that's created to deposit the stumps of the trees that are auto-moving. And again, in the idea of keeping the truck trips down, not taking anything offsite and reusing everything again to create a natural look up there. And you can see a little better parking area as well with the tees. And go to one more. That's just the rest of the site, again, blown up. As you can see, the parking lot moved into the infiltration system, to the pond area and the greens. We do have some wetlands in front that we're mitigating for and replicating. Again, we're working through the conservation. That'll be all native plantings. Next one, I think it's... This is just an idea of an aerial photo. Doesn't really show up well on the screen, so I apologize for that. And then I think the next one is the lighting. Nope. Landscape, that's Jackie's. We are proposing landscape planning in relation to the site plan review. We can certainly have Jackie come back and address this in a minute. I just didn't want to jump to the lighting plan, which is one more. I hope I blew it up on the phone. These are a little hard to read. I apologize. If you go out up close, you can see that those are all numbers. Those numbers indicate the foot candles. That plan there particularly shows that there is no light trespass off of the property, which is the intent of most bylaws that I've shown you as well. So this will be, have lights. I'll let Eric talk about the timing of the lights and when they're on and when they won't be on. So Jackie will quickly go run through her landscape plan and then we'll turn it over to Eric and then we'll get to questions.
The landscape plan was designed with mostly native grasses. I've also gotten some conifers or evergreens in the areas where it's thin to increase the screening for the buffers. We're keeping some trees here and... What else am I doing here? You know, some, and some ornamental plantings along the pro shop and some shade trees for the parking lot.
The real intent and one of the keys of this landscape plan was talking to the directed butters on the north and east side and hearing their concerns about having goals in the existing vegetation that they could see from a road track formation that something that would be there more often than not. You know, not, not a deciduous type of thing, but a mix of evergreen and deciduous.
And will you locate them when we're on site?
Yes, absolutely. And there was, there was a quick list and I had said before, and then I'll turn it over to Eric, that we had the peer review and there was a couple of comments that was worded in a fashion that said the board may want to be considered. So I'd like to try to put those out there and try to get some feedback from the board. And I'll just quickly, I won't even remain involved. One of them was the scale of the plans. Certainly change the scale. We can talk about that in terms of, um, terms of weight. The weapon flagging was one that I wanted to bring up and I touched on it in the beginning And I touched on it in the beginning, that it does improve the air rat. There are plans that show the weapon flagging. You could certainly put it on there. It was more of a visual edit to actually make these plans legible. But we can certainly show those, and we certainly have the flag that we delineated. We can show those, so we haven't said it's a preference of the board. The peer review agent mentioned curving preference. Our preference is the bed burn, as we've shown. And to address some of his other concerns, we are going to post some wooden diagrams in the areas that he was concerned about. The ice cream area and the area of slope of the infiltration system into the parking lot. Now, comment, you think it's a wooden diagram. We'll go with the theme that Eric's looking for, but also function to address that as well. Snow storage, was shown on the plan. Maybe you may have missed it, it's not very, they're not very big, so we can certainly.
Where is the storage?
Um, the case actually on that plan, there was a couple places.
Snow storage here.
Yep, and then up above.
Here.
Yep.
Here.
And then there was another one that thinks I was. We have three or four, we can certainly add more.
Okay.
That's not a problem. I think that was his intent to the permit, but.
Now, did you get the actual report numbered from?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If you are going to maybe speak to us about some of these instead of picking and choosing.
I certainly do.
Why don't you, if you're going to get into that detail right now?
Again, if you'd like.
You're going to just choose the ones that aren't that burdensome. Go ahead, Marlon, one more second.
You can continue, but I'm not sure if all of our board members have had an opportunity to review the.
That's right, yeah.
So you may not be getting full response right now.
No, the intent of what I was doing real quick is there was a few comments that said the board may want to consider. So I was just trying to get info on those. The rest of them, we will address. I mean, that's plain and simple. We'll address them, and you'll see our responses.
The five responses in writing?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. So then, in that case, I think I've.
Yeah, that's.
Pretty much, yes, I'm. And then we'll answer questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Glenn Moore, Slechman. Thank you for everybody showing up, obviously concerns for this, this project and all questions. I'll make a brief, but I do want to go over a couple things real quick. First of all, I have met with the fire chief, I've met with the neighbors to address their concerns multiple times. Obviously, you have a lot of paperwork in front of you. One of the things I do want to bring up is the community impact that this facility will have. It's not on the papers that you see. I just want to give a quick example. I grew up in North Reading, and in 1986, North Reading took over, it'll be the golf course, their eminent domain. And one of the things that you don't see in what they've had, the community impact, is they've provided hundreds of jobs throughout the community through the years, which I will also provide jobs. They've done a golf and schools program. They've offered free clinics throughout the years. They obviously have scholarships, which I will do. I'll do a day of revenue donated to a high school for a scholarship. Obviously, the high school team, I believe, the swept me to get a letter from the high school coach the last couple days. So those are a couple of things that you don't see that this will really have a positive impact on the community. Couple other things, just want to go over lighting. Obviously, there's been some questions on that, and just to kind of break it down. For the months April, May, and June, the average time will be on for thirty-two minutes. For July, August, and September, forty-six minutes. So really, the six months that are the prime seasons, less than an hour, the lights will be on. So I know that was quite a concern there. The last thing I do, just want to let everybody know, I've been in golf business twenty-five years, worked at clubs. This is obviously my venture, and, you know, so is, you know, run, run operations. So there's no concern there, obviously, from an operational standpoint. And other than that, just last thing, it is a seasonal business for the most part, and there is a small growing season. So I do ask the boards to please take in consideration time. I know we have to go through the process, but just please be considerate of the time, because there is a small window for grass growing. Other than that, I've built enough to question, I imagine, is quite a few.
Can you give us times again that you said in lighting, April, May, and June?
Sure. Thirty-five minutes. Thirty-two minutes. And July, August, September, forty-six minutes. That's the average time they're allowed to be on.
Forty-six. And will be on September, October, November, December?
Well, that, that July, August, September, that's forty-six minutes. October, really, it's all weather dependent. Right at nine o'clock, they will go off. So it really depends, you know, a cold day, then people aren't there, will shut off. You know, obviously, if it's seven o'clock degrees, you know, they will stay on, so.
But there is the possibility in October and November from being on for three or four hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else? How was the operation?
Eight AMs and nine PM, seven days a week.
When you first come before, as you've mentioned, you were planning to have it be free for students. I was wondering if you could talk about what that program looks like, and if you'd be comfortable with it being put in the order of conditions should the special permit be granted.
Absolutely. The golf team, obviously, playing practice there for free. That's not a problem to put in there. Obviously, we give some clinics throughout the year for the town. But even more than happy to have that in there, without a doubt. And we'd obviously have some junior, some junior golf teams and stuff like that. And that would, that would, you know, be dependent on, obviously, time and stuff like that. But without a doubt, the high school team and some junior clinics that are provided to the kids throughout the summer.
On the plan, it looks like you plan on tying into drainage on Scotland Road to drain the site? Is that accurate?
There's a portion that will be tied in, yes.
Okay. Do you know where the outfalls are?
Well, that's actually one of the comments for the peer review.
I was curious if you knew.
Well, we have an idea. We couldn't open a couple of them, so we're going to make sure that we have that fully addressed and have a good response.
I have another question. How many parking spaces are you going to be providing?
Any more members?
I have a question concerning traffic by the entrance and exit. I've been by on Scotland Road several times, and it's not really a great sightline. So I'm curious if you could open that up, have an entry lane and an exit lane coming up on the side of the road to get out there safely. Because even though it's posted at forty-five miles an hour, I think people might agree, people go about fifty to fifty-two mile an hour.
It's not very slow. Eric can take it.
And one of the things, you know, the golf is trickle-in, trickle-out is not a good time in there.
I still get concerned about that, because the sightlines, when you're going fifty-five, the sightline is shorter than when you're going forty-five. So it's a great issue for me.
Add to what George said, that's a really seriously dangerous corner.
And actually, there's another question, so see the.
Yeah, I'm pretty much finished with that, except I've seen and I've visited the sites in Davis and in Middleton. In fact, I lived in Davis for years. So on Conant Street, the facility up there is basically on a town road, not very much improved from what it was thirty years ago. And I've been up and down that road many times, so I know what the traffic is there, it's not very much. Middleton is on Route 114, very well-developed road, which has good traffic control built within the road. So people coming out, in and out of that driving range are pretty safe. They take the time to keep an eye on it, great sightlines. So that's between those three, among those three, this one causes me a couple more concern than those. Now, the only other question I had was, you have a list of the trees being cut of six-inch in count or more. Is that's one of our requirements in the site plan review?
Well, for your first comment, we'd happen to take a look at the traffic provided in some detail. And at the time, at this moment, we do not have accounts of the trees being removed. We certainly could. But the thought process behind not going out to identify each one of them was twofold. One, the idea of a regular development subdivision, so on and so forth, we could move things around to save some, save a tree or two here and there. This particular use to leave trees in a fair way is counterproductive. So the thought was going to be that we would request a waiver upon that particular, because the, the road, trying to save anything within that cleared area, kind of defeats the purpose of the law's traffic.
Might make it more interesting, but make a formal request for waiver.
Yes.
To the board.
Yes, that was the intent.
We did bring in that buffer zone after meeting with the neighbors, twenty-five, at some spots a hundred. So it would really cut down.
So how close is the entryway to, that's the house that's, that is the neighbor, right? Yeah, that, is that someone's home?
Yes.
How, how close is the driveway to that home?
I believe we are, I'm getting up. Yeah, it's approximately two, fifty to a hundred feet. I'd have to get up and scan it tight. But I know that when we were asked to show homes within fifty feet of the house, this one just about made it. It was a little bit outside, so it's a one to fifty, less than a hundred. And certainly put a distance on there and revise plans as soon.
Is there a home in that corner where everyone drives towards from the driving booths? I'm not sure.
I'm not. At the end of the range?
Yeah.
Yeah. Four hundred and fifty yards. It's three hundred-plus yards plus fifty-foot trees. There's no possible way for.
How far can a pro drive a golf ball? Pardon my ignorance, because I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the average person hits a little over two hundred yards, and golf pros can hit it at two ninety. So they're not going to even come out, you know. I mean, the longer it is over three hundred yards, but that's, you know, roll. No one's carrying it even.
And how far is that home from?
It's four hundred and fifty. It's three thirty to the end of the range. And then plus you have a hundred feet of forty-foot trees, and then you have their property that's fifty to sixty feet. So you're, you're getting in the four hundred-plus range. Plus carry, if you did the trajectory, you'd have to get almost five hundred yards to carry it. So it's really, it's impossible. I mean, just to be honest with you, I wish, I wish I could do that, I would be here.
Well, regarding that, you had mentioned Vanna, that the landscape plan called for buffer to ensure that lighting didn't intrude into the adjacent homes. So what size species are you talking about that would do that?
Well, it's not necessarily trees to buffer the lighting or to buffer the view.
So that's.
The lighting is set that it doesn't splash onto the.
So that a resident wouldn't see the range? What would you be buffering? Are you buffering for the golfer, or are you buffering for the resident?
No, for the residents. For the residents.
The idea, if I may, behind it is the individuals that are here, and they're, there are holes in terms of the natural buffer here. And the concern was, well, I don't, I don't want to be standing in the driveway and being able to look right at the people swinging the golf balls. So the thought was to fill in the holes with agreeable species or agreeable plants. So when they turn and look at that, they see trees.
And so, and so the, the size of the species is a good-sized species, not a three-foot abreviating?
No.
Right?
Let me just follow up with that. So I had to do with the neighbors, one of their requests was not to touch that buffer zone, not to take down the trees. And I agreed. They asked for a couple more towards the middle of the property, so that's where we filled in, but we're not going to touch that at all. And they have a nice buffers on there right now.
The parking numbers are like seventy-five spaces, but you really only got thirty. If it was full, you'd have thirty people on the driving range and maybe ten on your green area. I'm just curious whether or not there's too much asphalt. Is that asphalt or is that gravel?
Asphalt.
That's, that's a lot of gravel, or it's a lot of asphalt?
It is, and what we did is we consulted Sun and Air and Richardson's, and they're looking at their parking lot. And Sun and Air has over a hundred spaces. You get people popping in and out, obviously, with ice cream. You have thirty mats, you have ten grass tees, plus you have your short game area. If you have the high school team there of, you know, the kids driving in, you'd have plenty of parking and also employees. So that's what we kind of factored into going up with that number of seventy-five.
The final question I had, and I guess it's also of our legal counsel, is that the site plan for the special permit for the use is for a driving range. But the ice cream shop and the pro shop are not protected, are not allowed anywhere in our zoning code in an agricultural district. So are you the attorney?
Me, because they're commercial.
Because they're commercial. So are you the attorney? So I guess we need a clarification as to what happens in terms of what use is being permitted and what, what role there is of these uses as complementary to the, to the main use or not. But it seems to me that those uses are not allowed, just not allowed. So driving range is allowed.
Now, is that a question to Ginny to?
Yeah, I'd like clarification from Ginny, why she has time.
That's, that's my reading of the bylaws as well. It's not, the, the commercial uses doesn't fall within anything that is even permitted by a special permit, by my reading. And if they want their attorney to enlighten me or tell me why they do believe that the pro shop and the ice cream stand would be allowed under the zoning bylaw, I'd be happy to look at what, what they have to say.
I think the pro shop kind of goes hand in hand with the range itself. If you're going to sell golf balls, it's, you know, you can't have a pro shop not sell golf balls to the range. So it's kind of a, you know, and the ice cream, what we did is obviously we studied other facilities and that goes in. And obviously, the path is different with the bylaws. That's where the.
And I, and I went to visit the Sun and Air Center. And I will say it's a well-run facility. But it's clear that the ice cream facility is a major part of that. And, you know, this location here is different, because the Sun and Air is right on the street. And this is set in, but it's not a use that's permitted. I don't know how we can, I mean, how you get your head around that. It's just not allowed.
Ginny, I listened, but I'm not positive I heard. Was your statement that the commercial use in that zone isn't even maybe possible even by special permit?
Right.
Correct. There's, in the use regulation schedule, they list a variety of commercial uses. And after that, in this district, they can say, you know, buy special permit or just not permitted. And anything that looks to me that, that a pro shop or an ice cream store could be is, is something that doesn't, there's not discretion to grant a special permit even if you want it to. So, you know, land use attorneys can make creative arguments and happy to look at what you see. But of course, every town has its own bylaws. So just because one golf range in North Andover has a, has an ice cream shop does not make that permissible in the residential agricultural district in Newberry.
Has the presence that's set in a town with another business that has the same, that sells retail, that's agricultural and residential?
I mean, even if that happened, I mean, this, this board has to look at the zoning bylaw and, you know, and, and they can't grant something that's not allowed, that they're not permitted, or that they don't have the discretion under the zoning bylaw to allow.
Now, not being Socrates, it seems to me that we need to, you know, lay that critical component to rest before we proceed much further, Ginny.
And what, what I was imagining is, in the use regulation schedule, when, there's one that says use customarily accessory to allowed use is permitted. But an allowed use is a, is a use that's permitted by right in a district, not one for which you need to get a special permit. The other, you know, the other things, professional and business offices and services, including but not limited to medical, legal, and financial services, for that, they can be a special permit. But barber's hairdressers not permitted, business repair services not permitted. And I don't know where my next page is, but I mean, when you go through retail establishments selling general merchandise, including food, not permitted in this district. It's just not permitted. It's not something for which you can get a special permit.
Let me ask, obviously, the bobbies there, the farm stand down the street, is that special permit, is that agricultural?
It's ad residential.
Let's do this. We need to have that completely solved before we continue after tonight. Let's continue with tonight, because we have people here and it's an armament in the white.
Can we ask, if, if you're not allowed to have the ice cream, is that, is that a game changer for you?
No, I think, I mean, I think we would proceed with the golf. We'd have to look at it. You know, I don't want to answer that, yes or no, right now, we have to look at it from a business standpoint.
Yeah, I strongly suggest we do.
This is certainly information that takes some time to do some research and formulate with your attorney, with our attorney. So like I said, instead of trying to answer everything tonight, because you're not going to be ready to do it, why don't we proceed with your presentation and the rest of the public here? So that you at least have information, because we're never going to have the people assembled that we have here tonight. All right, so go ahead, continue.
So I'll open up.
Any other questions for our board, home board? So that being said, before we open up questions from the audience, of people that are here tonight, Dana, are you ready? A clerk would like to at least read some of the letters that are committed support and not support. Not read the letters, but read the names and addresses so that you're aware of the correspondence that we have.
So what I will do is read who wrote the letter and whether or not they're in opposition or in support, as well as the letters we received from people within the town government structure. So James Redd has been contacted to see if there are issues with the driveway. He is, the fire chief has been contacted, and neither of them had strong objections. We have a letter from Barbara E. Rogers in favor. We have a letter from Barbara E. Rogers as a trustee and William R. Buckley as a trustee in favor. And those were both received on May ninth, two thousand seventeen. We have a letter received on May tenth, two thousand seventeen, in favor from James L. Buckley and William, Wilma, sorry, R. Buckley. We have a letter received in opposition from Andrew Barton and Aaron Barton, one sixty-one Scotland Road. Received June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. This one may have been received as an email. We have a letter received in opposition on June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, from. seventeen, from Laura Hanlon and Frances Henni. We have a letter received in opposition, an email again from Laura Hanlon and Frances Henni, that was received on June thirteenth. A letter received on June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, by Georgian Deborah Carbone in opposition. An email received on June thirteenth from Deborah and George Carbone in opposition. Another email received June twentieth from Georgian Deborah Carbone in opposition. Jessica Carbone, June twentieth, in opposition. June twentieth, Mark and Valerie Murphy, we received a letter, received a letter on June twenty-sixth and it dated on the twentieth, in opposition. We received an email in opposition on June twenty-sixth from Richard J. Dubay. I'm entirely sure I have the accent. Sorry, that one was mislabeled. Sorry. A letter received on June twenty-sixth from Richard J. Dubay. Isn't Dubey. Dubey. Sorry. Looks like a French name. Is in support. Yes, he's the cook. Mislabeled by notes. My apologies. We have a letter received, an email received June twenty-sixth from Stephen Gad in opposition. A letter received June twenty-seventh by Jason and Jennifer Lowery in opposition. Email received May twenty-sixth in opposition from Jason and Jennifer Lowery. A letter received, email received June twenty-sixth in opposition from Dave Stratcher. A letter received June twenty-seventh in opposition from Elizabeth Sayers-Gibone.
Okay, thanks. I'm glad you did that, and I did. Appreciate it.
The letter from the fire chief has several things in it that they would like to see happen. I don't know if you've discussed it, so we'll make sure that you get a copy.
I don't know, nurse, but they had some of it. Now, I would like to open up to the audience. Now, once again, you are going to have to come up and stand where Eric is, and please state your name and where you live, your address. So, who would love to be first?
Drag this bad tip along with me. My name is Tom Walsh. I live at three five four High Street in Newburyport, and the main thing that we're concerned about here is buildings and whether those buildings are going to be within five hundred feet or so of the wildlife management area, which is at least on the south side and perhaps also a little bit on the west side. So I'd like to have a copy of that, if I can have it, which I would turn over to the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. The manager for this area is not here with us tonight, but I'll certainly get that to her promptly, because we are, we're concerned about that, because when buildings get too close to the wildlife management areas, it then cuts down on the hunting spaces that are available in the wildlife management areas, which is one of their prime reasons for existence. So that's pure and simple. Could you, if I give you my email address, could you, or give me a copy of it, whichever works.
See if I can address that. With our conservation filing, we submitted to National Heritage. We actually submitted a second plan to them, and we actually won a letter from Fish and Wildlife, giving a no-take ruling on our development.
Okay, that's an sent to Fish. Okay. Super. Thank you.
And I can provide that to the board and to the clerk, so it's-
Don't we public record toss?
It's actually part of the conservation.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Wilma Buckley. I live at one fifty-nine Scotland Road. I, my husband and I built a new house in nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five, within one month. Concordville, Massachusetts, made a state pit right across the street from my house. The by- that's-
Made a what?
The state pit. One month I was in Massachusetts. The town had been elected to tell us in the fall when we applied for all the papers to know that, that the state pit was going to move. Beside that is the bus terminal, a bus depot, John Salt. It was in last night's paper, in the week of noon, that my end of the street was the gateway to the town of Newbury. So dump hum to the golf center. What is any more hum than trucks driving twenty-four hours a day in and out of that state pit? Sand, salt, the working down in the bridge, trucks in and out twenty-four hours a day, arguing here. It, I just think it's a good idea. It, it's something different. It's not going to put a big strain on the town, you know, the tax rate, the base of the town as far as expenses, like a development with wood, with kids going to school and whatnot. And like I say, I don't live in the gateway. There is no gateway to the town of Newbury. Thank you.
Jim, I just want to-
You have to come up.
Ben Gagian, thirteen Plumbers Lane. I just want to make a point of clarification that Mr. Walsh's concern, I don't think, would be covered by a National Heritage, sorry, a National Heritage review. They're looking for species of concern and other, and habitats of concern, rather than a five-hundred-foot buffer on the WMA. So your area of concern may actually still be valid to you. You know, that's what your area is concerned. It's just not something they would review during that process.
Thanks, Ben. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We can't have done the comprehensive job that everyone's required.
Nina Tennis, nine last lane. I take Scotland Road every day to work, and I think it's not a good idea if people are driving seventy, but we can accommodate them. We go the opposite and try to catch them. I don't play golf. I like baseball, but I also know that I think a recreation idea is a really excellent idea for that use of property. I often wonder why there's not more in Scotland Road. I'm just curious, you know, about that. I think it's really positive for kids. I think it's really positive for the community to have a recreational thing. I remember talking to the head of the financial committee, and he was wondering how to bring future young families into this area. And I was just talking to a real estate person who used to be teaching mine, and I said, well, how's things? She says, Newbury's booming. I said, Newbury not. Newbury, people want to walk to, walk to things that are going on. I think it'd be a really excellent asset for us to have something like that. I think if you had a big housing development up there, I have a neighbor next to me that glares, his bright light, there's no way that any wildlife could support at night. I can't do anything against him. You have no control over what people put in their kennel, or in their lawn, if it's private development. You seem like a responsible person. I just went on, we used to do other kinetic things. I just think it's a positive thing. I think the impact would be less. I think people driving to work, everyone leaving at seven, eight AM, all piling onto Scotland Road to develop it, it'd be way worse, and traffic kind of coming in and out throughout the day. And I just think it's a really great thing for kids to have a recreational site, and I think it would be a positive thing for the people to-
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, English is a good language, that would like to speak before we close and we cut up?
Hey, I'm William, twelve Scotland Heights Drive. I pull out of Scotland Heights every day, two, three, four times a day. I understand the traffic flow on Scotland Road. It's kind of straight where I come out, and I realize this is on a turn, which is problematic. However, down the street, the other end of the turn is a bus depot with forty-plus buses pulling out of there for two to three hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon from a dead stop. So there's precedence for having people pulling out on Scotland Road on a non-going basis. This is going to be, everybody's not going to show up at eight AM, like all the buses pulling out. It's going to trickle in, it's going to trickle out. I don't see a real problem with the amount of traffic, although it still is a hazard because it is on a turn. Secondly, as far as Ms. Buckley's comment about a beautiful entry to our town, let's face it, we have the DPW VR, we have the bus depot, we have a house on the other side, east of this, that's actually standing with holes in the roof and a garage that's collapsed, which doesn't add to the beautiful entrance to the town either. I really think that those putting greens out front can really add something very nice to the entrance to the town. I think if people will notice it, I think it will bring attention to the facility. I think it can be a good facility. As far as noise, I've heard people complain that it's going to be noise. Other than the ping of a golf ball or occasional four-letter word from a guy that can't hit it straight, and maybe a tractor picking up the balls, I lay in bed at night listening to motorcycles going up and down ninety-five all night long, and nothing's ever done about the exhaust and loudness of motorcycles. So I don't think this is going to create noise. Lights, it's obvious the Triton Stadium has lights that shine down, not up, which is, which is good. I do think Mr. Sorenson's taken a huge risk with this. Whether this is going to be successful or not, he's investing hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy the property, develop the property. If it fails, my question to the planning board and the selectmen is, with a special permit, is there an alternate use that could be considered if this is approved and the business venture fails? Or is it strictly for a driving range? That's probably the most benign use of this property beyond building houses or building a farm, and it adds a value, a recreation value, to the people in the town. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Erica Jacobson, fifteen Scotland Road, Newbury, and I came here today to learn. I've been impressed. I did love the on-ramp in traffic because I live at the other end, at the other current turn, and see my kids' school bus nearly get rear-ended on a daily basis because traffic and the speed is an issue. That's not going to be here or there, but I hope that this plan comes together if you do find on busy days that hiring a traffic detail from the town of Newbury might help cars enter and exit safely. I think this is a great step forward. We're always, on the finance committee, being said that too much burden is being based on residential and that we don't have enough business in Newbury. This is an interesting use of land that we've driven by for years and never knew what could be done with it. I think it is a step in the right direction. I would like to make sure that all of the appropriate boards do their reviews to make sure that there's not going to be any issues that would perpetuate the flooding that happens on Scotland Road. Down by JR's Farm and my house, regularly, we get stuck because the water flows. So anything that would mitigate and cause more flooding that would then impact traffic coming in and out of the town of Newbury is something I'd ask to look for. If you can provide opportunities and jobs for people in the, in this area, especially even teenage jobs, that would be wonderful. So I think that it's worth considering. I ask the boards to give it your best shot and consider if you guys are thoughtful people. I appreciate it. And I hope the ice cream stand can be a part of it. I think that would be key.
Anyone else like to speak before we close? I'll continue.
Hi, Nick Lyon, one ten High Road, Newbury, Mass. The way I feel about this project is that, yes, Newbury does need some businesses. We're always talking about trying to move the town forward, but then we're always, always talking about putting them in the right location. And I feel that if you're going to put a pro shop and an ice cream stand in the middle of a residential neighborhood, do you guys really want that next to your house?
No.
So it's just simply, I don't want it in my backyard, and I feel that we have Route One and are designated areas for commercial use. Why are we trying to take away from our agricultural and our residential areas?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Laura Hanlon. My husband's Frankiney. We live at one sixty-seven Scotland Road, which I might show you is this house right here at the end of the driving range. The direction of where all the target grains and balls would be heading, regardless of how far anybody can hit them. The talk about the ugliness of the DPW and et cetera and those others, the state police barracks, the DPW and Salter, those are in a commercial zone, as you folks all know. This area is not commercial. It's agricultural or residential. Also, those facilities are necessary and vital to the town. You're talking public safety, public works, and student transportation. They have to exist somewhere. That's where the town put them, designated commercial. This is, this parcel is different. Not only is it residential, agricultural, it's not even located right on Scotland Road, like in between houses. This driving range would be located behind five or six residences. Four or five of those residences are the seller abudders who are selling this land. So the, it's okay with them, I guess, but it doesn't seem to be okay with the abudders who are on the T-stand end, or myself at the end of the driving range, and a couple other abudders who are also on Scotland Road who have written those on the position already. With your indulgence, I'd like to read the letter that I wrote to you. I understand why you're not reading them all. You've had blooming letters, but this does probably best state most of our concerns, if you don't mind. Okay. Hope your butt's next. Dear members of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, my husband and I have resided at one sixty-seven Scotland Road for twenty-one years. We are direct abudders to the proposed golfing center slash driving range to be built on Scotland Road, and would like to express our strong opposition to the issuance of a special use permit in connection with that project. Our property directly abuts the twenty-seven acre parcel described as one three one, one three three to one five one Scotland Road, upon which the proposed Newbury Golf Center would be built. The southwestern border of that parcel abuts the front and side yard of our home. The shared property line marked by a fieldstone wall is a near fifty-three feet from the side of our house and about sixty feet from our front door. The backyard of our home abuts the Martin Burns Wildlife Management Area. The woodlands surrounding our home provide beauty, peacefulness, and privacy, all of which were reasons that we purchased our home. Although the large wooded parcel being contemplated for this golf facility is privately owned and therefore could have foreseeably been sold and developed, we never could have imagined such an inappropriate use of development as a driving range. When a person makes the largest financial investment of his or her lifetime, i.e. usually the purchase of their home, they have a right to reasonably rely on the zoning in that neighborhood to protect their future enjoyment of their home as well as the value of their home. This is a primary reason that towns create zoning, develop master plans, and have planning boards. I think the fact that our home is located in a neighborhood zoned as agricultural or residential speaks to the inherent inappropriateness and unfairness of considering a commercial for-profit business to be built amongst pre-existing single-family homes. And although this business would be recreational in nature, it is nevertheless a business and should be located where business use is rightfully allowed by commercial zoning. Many towns have created a zone called Commercial Recreation in which driving ranges can be located. I understand that per Section ninety-seven dash three of the Newbury Zoning Code slash Use Regulations, the Board of Selectmen, quote, "in appropriate cases," unquote, "may grant special use permit if, quote, 'the use is for the best interest of the town, is not obnoxious or injurious to the neighboring properties, will satisfy a need or convenience not otherwise being served, will not affect the budding on nearby properties by increasing traffic and on-street parking, and that nothing connected with the use be visible from the street.'" Excuse me. "As in the butter who sprang yard is located sixty feet from the side of this property, where the end of the three-hundred-plus yard driving range will be built, the driving range is in fact angled directly at the front of our house and was intentionally angled away from the homes of the abudders who are the sellers. I can state unequivocally that the driving range built so close to our home would most certainly be both obnoxious and injurious. It would be obnoxious in the nuisance in both sight and sound. The closest thing to us per the site plan would be a tree stump disposal area, where the de-stump trees cut from twenty-plus acres would be mounded and left to decompose." where the de-stump trees cut from 20-plus acres would be mounded and left to decompose. This would not only be an eyesore, but the resulting decomposition would harm the land. For this reason, burial stumps is illegal. This developer intends to just cover them with a little dirt, which seems a fine distinction. A more obnoxious sight would be the brilliant LED lights which the developer intends to place not only at the tee stand slash pro shop end of the range, but also on the target green's downrange to include that target green number five, which would be located 260 yards from the tees. Per the developer, the driving range length would be about 300 yards at the tree-cut line. The tree-cut line initially proposed was a paltry 25 feet from abutters property lines. That buffer was subsequently increased to 50 to 70 to 100 feet in varying places following concerns voiced by ourselves and possibly others. The revised tree-cut line is not significant enough to mitigate the harmful effects of having a driving range located where natural landscape or residences should exist. We have viewed the LED lights being used at Sun 'n Air Golf Center in Danvers, a facility that this developer has stated to use as model, and the lights are appallingly bright there. They have the brightness of lights you would expect to see at a sports stadium, and Sun 'n Air did not even have lights alongside the range or downrange as this developer intends. Even if the lights are directed downward, the inevitable sky glow would truly be an obnoxious sight. With regards to sounds being obnoxious, a noise study would have been nice to see. A conclusory statement is made in the site plan that noise would not be a factor. I know the sound actually travels quite far in this area and will likely carry farther after the trees are cut down. I heard the noise at the ball-picking machine at Sun 'n Air, at Sun 'n Air, and it was quite loud and annoying. The developer has told us that he would do ball-picking at night after the 9:00 PM closing so the balls would not be stolen overnight as they have at Sun 'n Air. This suggests to me that trespasses are expected, another possible harm to abutters. These would be the same trespasses who could certainly, who could easily hit balls from downrange toward our house. Another routine noise would be that of heavy maintenance equipment, mowing the fairway as well as the target green. The driving range would be, would also be injurious to us due to the resulting loss of privacy, the interference with the everyday use and enjoyment of our home, which is a protected property right, and the very likely physical intrusion of golf balls in flight. The developer told us that the average golfer cannot hit a ball more than 300 yards, but also told us that Sun 'n Air is only 260 yards long and that there are, quote, "many balls," unquote, located beyond the end of their range. Additionally, the distance one can hit a golf ball is ever increasing due to the improved technology of golf equipment. Our front yard is only about 30 yards from where this 300-yard driving range would end. The creation of a driving range ending just off our front yard would constitute an unacceptable encroachment and trespass upon our property. Our home is not located hundreds of feet from the property line as the seller slash abutters homes, fortunately are. Our home is physically located about 60 feet from the property line at the end of the driving range where balls are aimed. Our front yard where we retain the sun and air around our chairs to enjoy our peaceful surroundings is located about 30 yards from the end of the driving range. We are the only abutting property that is located at this dangerous end of the proposed driving range. One abutter is located behind the tee stands. All other abutters, including seller abutters, are located alongside the range, a side which will additionally be protected by netting. I cannot imagine feeling safe enough to sit in our front yard if this range is built. We thought it worthwhile to visit the three nearby driving ranges that the developer mentioned to us, Sun 'n Air, Paradise Golf in Middleton, and Golf Country Richardson's Ice Cream in Middleton. In addition to the glaring lights, we observed that all three are located within commercial areas. None have lights located along or down the range, none have residences located along the range, and none have any residences or other structures located anywhere near the ends of the ranges, confirming common sense. With regard to regulation requirements that the use sought not affect nearby properties by increasing traffic, I have reviewed the developer's assessment of the impact upon traffic and did not find the citing of very dated vehicle counts on Scotland Road to be very helpful. A proper traffic study was not conducted. But if I accept these numbers obtained from Sun 'n Air, which I don't think would necessarily be an accurate predictor of expected traffic to Newbury Golf Center due to completely different environments, a 400 to 600 daily increase in vehicles on Scotland Road would still have an impactful effect, especially considering that the entrance to the facility will be located on a blind curve on Scotland Road. I can attest that although the speed limit on Scotland Road is 45 miles per hour, many cars drive in excess of that and are reluctant to stop or slow if our car is trying to make a turn off Scotland onto their street or driveway. With regard to whether the use of this property, of the property, be, quote, "for the best interest of the town," unquote, or, quote, "will satisfy a need or convenience not otherwise being served," unquote, I would suggest that on balance, the harms posed by a driving range and the inappropriateness of the location outweigh any benefits to the town. Also, meaning some, but not all, of the criteria specified by Section 97-4 for issuance of a special permit would not satisfy the regulation's requirement or intent. Although this facility would bring tax money to the town, so would residential homes or some other use of the property that is more harmonious with the neighborhood. I know that the property was marketed for possible use as a horse farm or the like. Such use would be infinitely more compatible with the neighborhood, which is made up of homes and farms. Any businesses located on Scotland Road are residential or agricultural in nature, in conformity with the zoning, including a B&amp;B and a horse ranch. The exceptions to this, the Staples Barracks, DPW, and Salter Transportation, are all located in a commercial zone that allows those uses. Another factor that makes a driving range in that location ill-advised is that another direct abutter to the parcel is mass fishing game, which oversees the Martin Burns Wildlife Management Area. In the 21 years we've lived here, we have come to know, respect, and coexist with the many inhabitants of Martin Burns. This week alone, we had a coyote and turkeys in our yard, and a fisher cat yesterday. They live here and they were here first. I think that cutting down 15 to 20 acres of their habitat for the purpose of a commercial-for-profit recreation facility in a neighborhood preserved for residential and agricultural use would be an unjustifiable travesty. The importance of protect, excuse me. The importance of protecting the area's wildlife was noted in Newbury's master plan. The plan includes an action map upon which the eastern edge of the parcel in question is marked, quote, "encourage open space protection slash wildlife corridor," unquote. The parcel's location adjacent to Martin Burns makes protection of dwindling habitat for wildlife an understandable concern and priority. I think it would also be in direct conflict with the Newbury's master plan and open space and recreation study, both of which emphasize and prioritize retention of Newbury's natural resources, including woodlands, wetlands, and significant sources of water supply. Over 80% of Newbury residents responded that the retention of Newbury's rural character was their number-one desire for the town. And although recreation was also a need identified in the town's study, the needs considered were those of children and were met with the creation of manter fields as well as the still undeveloped recreational property adjacent to the baseball field and byfield. More importantly, there is an inherently incompatible recreation being actively pursued adjacent to where this driving range would be. Hunting within Martin Burns is a pre-existing and very active recreation. The parcel in question is also located in a water supply protection overlay district, which triggers additional criteria to be met for issuance of a special permit. Quote, "Section 97-4B45C2 requires that, quote, 'the proposed use must be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other related natural characteristics of the site to be developed,' unquote." That criteria is certainly not met by this proposal, which would require massive clearcutting and substantial changes to the naturally ledgy and hilly topography in order to flatten it out for driving range. I know that repeated blasting was necessary to construct our home and our neighbor's home due to, due to the significant extent of ledge in this area. In fact, the foundation of our home was cracked during blasting at the abutting property. This developer has informed us that blasting may in fact be necessary in areas already noted to contain significant ledge. The parcel is not naturally conducive to the building of a driving range. A site walk will quickly reveal that. Because the parcel in question has been noted as a significant contributor to the area's water supply due to its dense woodlands and wetlands, and because we all rely on private wells for our personal water supply, we have great concern about the effect of the massive amount of intended clearcutting of trees. We've been told that the removal of so many trees, the alteration of the topography by flattening out the hills and the disruption of the soil will result in decreased absorption of rainwater, lowering our natural supply of water for our wells. An additional concern about the impact on the water supply stems from the use of fertilizers and pesticides that will, that will likely be used to grow and maintain grass on a driving range that is the length of three football fields. The overall impact on the environment would be substantial and detrimental. It is a fact that the golf industry has been in decline over the last few years. Two nearby driving ranges have failed and are now defunct, one in Salisbury and one in Ipswich. If this golf facility is allowed and it fails, the town will sacrifice precious natural resources for no enduring benefit. In order to remain financially profitable, the developer will have to adapt his business to popular trends. He could also expand his operating hours of 8:00 to 9:00 AM or add additional amenities. My husband and I have met with the developer, Eric Sorenson, on two occasions to discuss the details of his plans and our concerns. We discussed the viability of the proposed golf center in a declining golf industry, and Eric mentioned that a hot trend is, quote, "top golf," a branded entertainment venue featuring interactive competitive golf games, which typically include food, alcohol, dozens of TVs, and live music as part of the experience. Though that is not part of his current site plan's project narrative, it suggests a potential future expansion. Although Eric did decide to enlarge the tree-cutting buffer zones somewhat, a hundred to 100 feet from 25 feet, but mostly because of required wetland buffer, he stated that due to his business model, he would not consider shortening the length of the driving range from 300 yards, would not consider, not consider shortening the operating hours from dawn to dusk, and would not consider eliminating the use of LED lighting. We found Eric to be a pleasant young man with a clear passion for building his own golf teaching facility. And though we wish him success in fulfilling that dream, we cannot support the location of such a business in our rural neighborhood. The driving range simply does not belong, sandwiched between and alongside people's homes. Scotland Road is not 114, it is an exit off Route 95 that makes it a well-traveled gateway to Newbury that is known for its bucolic and pastoral views, nor is Newbury similar to Danvers or Middleton. Once a town loses its signature character, in Newbury's case, the beauty of its retained natural fields and woodlands is gone forever. This was a recognized concern in both Newbury's master plan and open space study. The 2006 master plan states that "site plan review provides municipal review and oversight of projects that could dramatically alter the quality of life in the neighborhood or area, projects that may have impacts on environmental qualities, water resources, drainage, and community character." I respect a landowner's absolute right to sell their land, but I think that right is also subject to a town's enforcement of its zoning code and master plans and that the issuance of a special use permit should be very carefully considered and the criteria for such should be strictly adhered to. Doing so protects a homeowner's use of their own land as well as the value of that land. Our homes sudden proximity to the end of a driving range would devalue our property. It cannot be compared to living along the fairway of a golf course, something that some people may find appealing. I do not know anyone who would like to have their front yard abut the end of a driving range. I suspect that some area golfers might find the idea of this facility appealing as a place where they could practice and/or take a lesson. My husband and I are both golfers, so we understand. However, there are other nearby places to do such. Pease Golf Course in Portsmouth and Black Swan Country Club in Georgetown, in addition to the three driving ranges in Danvers and Middleton. And although the proposed Newbury Golf Center would offer amenities such as golf lessons and ice cream, it is just a nice, it is just a nice euphemism for what it would actually be, a driving range. It belongs in a more appropriate setting than the one being considered. And although we found Eric to be sincere in his stated hopes to be a good neighbor, we think that the nuisance elements of this driving range would make that impossible despite good faith and tensions or efforts. I think he understands that our opposition to this proposal is not personal to him or the sellers and that we are simply very concerned about its impact on our home and our quality of life. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our input as direct abutters to this proposed business. Respectfully, Laura Hanlon, correct the scene.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? That being said, with all the issues and impending variables that we have in the air, it would probably be our best to...
This is another abutter that, oh, his wife is the abutter, Masgwitch property. Would you like to speak?
Ooh, gee, keep on editing. I'm Jack O'Brien, I live at 12 Hill Street in Randolph. Ninety years ago, Stella and Joseph Masgwitch bought the land and immediately abutted this property to the east. I first went out to that property in 1950, in February 1950. Subsequent to that, Jim and I probably, I know I did, spread about a million pounds of fertilizer on that property in the next door. The point I make is, the Masgwitches brought this property to work, and they worked it as a farm. It was a working farm. The Goodriches, who bought the property originally, and then the Cunningham's, who inherited, it was working, it was a working farm. And I know the Colby family knows, and this is just a continuation of the working history of that Scotland Road. And that's where I come from. Thank you, thank you.
Once again, is there anyone else who would like to speak? That being said, back to my thoughts that I had before. We've got a lot of things that we have to review, there's a lot of variables to look at. So, in deference to John and Martha, is there anything else? I mean, I think the best thing for us to do is make a motion to continue. Is there anything you need to add to that?
Do you want to do a site visit?
I mean...
I would.
Well, your site visit, excuse me, yeah?
I would like to.
Yeah. So, we can, now, before we, we need to schedule a time. You guys have it down with you, right?
No, we did it year, uh, two years ago for another year's.
Propose a time, someone.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of one.
Probably next week sometime.
Next week.
You have to do it for us.
So, July 6th.
July 6th.
A Saturday? That would be the 8th or the 15th?
This is...
July 8th?
I think it was my, what do you mean? Sorry, George, it's no way.
9:00 AM? On the air, 9:00 AM, okay.
Excuse me, I asked a question. Could you also do a site walk with the abutters also, because I'm at 123 Scotland Road?
The, the site walk would be a public, so everyone would be...
So, anybody could go? So, anybody could go?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Are you asking something separately? Because I think that the planning board needing you is required, whether the planning board could view from your property, is that what you're asking?
Yes, because I'm one of the direct abutters where the ice cream stand is, where the, um, the pro shop is, the road, and I would like them to see from my point of view.
You'd like us to visit your property as well?
Yes.
Sure. Andrew, sorry. Okay, so I propose a site walk on July 8th at 9:00 AM. Can you do that?
Okay, I'll, I'll, one question.
Also, um, was it, um, what's going on? Because I know the Loo was denied use of lights on the Little League field, which is a much limited time because, as you heard him, it went from 46 minutes to three hours.
That was a D. restriction.
What?
That was a different thing.
I know it was a different thing, but the main premise of it, though, was gonna bother the abutters. That premise is the same. Oh, yeah, Dr. Richard Shaffey of, um, can I ask Scotland Heights?
Thank you, sorry.
Detective, relax, as the process goes along. Let's set the date.
I think we, so, go ahead and make the motion. I move that we have a site walk on July 8th at 9:00 AM.
Second. Is the discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're gonna move to motion for continuance. And as we motion for that continuance, Martha, do we set a date now?
Date and time soon.
Before we even make the motion? Well, probably the best thing to get it out. All right, so, let's do that. Do we need a motion for a continuance of the venue?
We need...
A date for next meeting. That's gonna include you guys too?
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be...
So, that would be, we have another... What is it? So, that would be...
Yeah, I don't think much.
What happened July? Mars is going to use July 18. So you guys... Aye. July 18. July 18. August 8. 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 So I move that we continue this public hearing to August 8th at 7:15.
Okay.
So I move that we continue this public hearing to August 8th at 7:15.
Is there any discussion?
That's a long time. Is there any possible... That will affect the confirmation. They will hear from the boards. So, the election boards, that seem to be a little far separated, so we continue the meeting. Yeah, it's affecting the consideration dates.
What do we have? We can schedule for the half this way, or do them both?
We need a 8:15. They scheduled it like seven.
But we schedule...
They said seven fifteen, so we could do eight fifteen, give them an hour.
Or seven forty-five, you can always start it later, you just can't start it earlier, so.
Okay.
That would end sooner.
Which does the... I thought the 11th didn't work. July 11th.
July 11th.
I don't know. We can call cameras back after a little bit.
Like eight o'clock.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Probably.
Okay. We have... We have four definites in one.
All right. That seems to work.
All right, so I move to remove my previous motion.
Is there a second?
I do get a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
New motion?
I move that we continue the public hearing till July 11th at 7:45.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And bring to sleep, you have.
So, I need a motion to continue the public hearing to July 11th at 7:45.
I move, ask for the planning board, I move that the court here be continued until July 11th at 7:45 here.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, thank you, and I would like to thank everyone for coming.
Thank you.
We're going to let you guys file out.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Drive them safely.
I have a void in front of my attention. Thank you. I would like, I also, the... So let's go back to the recreation committee. I don't know, it sounds like our schedule is kind of tight. I don't know whether we want to have here on July 11th. They are doing... So then we need to ask those other folks in, too.
Well, I can reschedule that. I mean, that's up to you.
I think we should, because I don't think there's enough time in the night to do all three of those two public hearings and that. So, do I need to do a motion for that, or?
Maybe just...
Yes. No. No, because they're just on the agenda. It's just a scheduling agenda.
What were they?
So Greenie R. is scheduled to come back on 3/11.
He would be better than the town.
Okay. So the August meeting.
Okay, so that's all set. The other thing was that the media committee met today, and they are... Let me see, where's his notes? I have notes. There it is. Okay, the committee voted to... Oh, the committee voted to have people do, residents do public and community content, so that they moved to put some money from the cable budget to hire some, hopefully residents, resident or residents, to, in an effort to create more content around town. This topic uses drones and just try to get more public instead of just talking heads on our channel, to try to get more of the public access. So they're trying to move in that direction, and the Comcast negotiations are still going along swimmingly. Well, that's why they had topical fan board, rec committee, and the other five. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, Jackie Stade.
Has the media committee thought about recording things like the sections of Bifeld Art Fest, or things like that, the activities that are happening down?
That's what they're looking to do, the device. So if they just appropriate some money, that's what they want to do, yeah.
And yeah, I just know they had a production at the Bifeld Art Center.
I went to the... Oh, you mean inside the building, or the one that, you mean the one over on...
No, the one in, the one inside the building, the little women. And I know that those things used to be broadcast, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I can bring it back to them. That's fine. Didn't work, yeah. The little engine, I couldn't.
Very good. Thank you so much. We have appointments for FY '18. If it's okay with the board, I would like to go through these and...
I'm going to recuse myself from agricultural commission.
And I would like to take in, say the person's name and move on to the next, and if we have any names we want to hold, you can hold them. So, it is the town of Newbury, and it's the agricultural commission, and the alternate would be Lisa Colby. Orders to Boston Trail Committee would be Martha Taylor, Steve Fran, Tim Kuris, Ted Russell and John Vinselwark. Conservation Commission, Doug Packer. Is there something in there? Yes, there is. Ben Kehegan. The alternate appointed from, what is it, Ellen?
He was appointed an alternate in, on July 1st of 2016, but now he is, would like to become a member.
Okay, so, and that would be Doug Becker and Ben Kehegan as a former.
And then would complete his term to 2019.
Thank you. Counselor Major Jerry Doyle, Illinois Justice Chair, Austin Charles, Rick. Counsel, cultural council would be Amy Savinski, Catherine...
Your only reason.
Bachelor, Fred.
Save City once.
Michael Updike, Fred. By the way, I just...
The planning committee is Paul Mayette. Great Marsh Task Force, John O'Connell, Douglas Packer, Deb Rogers, Hendrick Tons, Martha Taylor and Jeffrey Walker. Historical Commission, Channing Howard, Carolyn Casey, Sue Nagle is the alternate. Human Resources Board is John Lucy, is the employee rep, and Mark Kleckman. Media Committee, I am the selectman rep. Paul Dobitz, Donald Jarvis, Marsha Mahoney, Joe McDonough and Robin Williams. Open Space Committee, Michael Carboni, Dan Streeter, Martha Taylor. Planning Board, Rachel McManus is the associate member. Okay. I don't know what, isn't she, isn't, no, I think...
That's the person that was...
Yeah, yeah, I know who she is. I thought that was elected, no. Do you appoint that?
Not the associate, yeah.
Associate.
Thank you. Master Plan Committee, Ron Barrett, Marshall Jespersen, Steve Manjin, Rachel McManus, Elizabeth Mitchell, George Morse, John O'Connell, Peter Pecos, James Robinson, Dan Streeter, Martha Taylor, Fred Thurlo and John Weiss. Meramack Valley Planning, John Weiss, the commissioner, Martha Taylor is the alternate commissioner. Recreation Committee, David Broll, Alicia Greco, that would be me as the selectman's rep, Michelle Hall, Patrick Heffernan, Celine Muldowney, Mike Sant, Michael Walpole. Stormwater Management Team, Tracy Blais, Yvonne Bushwell, John O'Connell, Doug Packer, Deborah Rogers, James Saret, Martha Taylor. Zoning Board of Appeals, Elaine Baker, Doug Packer as an associate member. George Morse is the planning board liaison, and that's it.
No.
No. Did you get that right here?
I did Zoning Board of Appeals. I was following that. The next page.
Town administrator.
Got that right here.
Oh. Sorry, I took that.
Sorry. I would listen to her.
Tracy Blais, the town administrator, and Ellen Jamison, the executive administrator to the board of selectmen. And that's it. Sorry.
I would entertain a motion that automatically recuses us from the ones that we need to recuse from. How bad?
I make a motion to approve all and recuse anyone who cannot vote on a certain appointment, either because they are related or they are themselves being appointed.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? The town administrator's report, we have whole business, which is, Chuck's not here to illuminate this, but it is the same request for public use, as I understand this, Ellen, for the car show. And it's just a new date.
Yeah, they got rid of it.
And the new date would be Friday, August 25th, 2017, from 3:00 p.m. tonight. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents' statement, how do you feel?
I feel great, I'll do it. We have a letter from Maya Jespersen about the island center, praising the work being done there. We have a letter from the Department of Conservation and Recreation about the transit program for the North Shore. We have a letter from Academy of Design and Consulting. And, I want to find that one to see exactly what it's about. Oh, about the area waterways, that's from DCR. We have a letter from Verizon about utility work. National Grid is now going to take over all emergency responses for holes and issues of that nature, and that's between Verizon and National Grid as far as their sharing of those responsibilities.
It sounds like National Grid is going to put them in, and the other is going to take them out.
Yep, yeah. Verizon will be doing removals, Grid will be doing installations, and Grid will be doing emergency response.
And the only thing maybe of importance would be is, the letter that we have from Conservation and Recreation is going to be, far as I read that, it has to do with some of the way the sand migrates on our beaches, so we kind of...
Yeah, it's about the studies that have been ongoing.
So if anyone kind of hears that and wants to know, is that...
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get into the details.
No, I don't blame you at all.
And then we have a letter from Comcast about price changes and channel cancellations and different channels coming on, and all that is in the record, so you can hear whether they're interested in what they're changing.
If you got it right in front of you?
I got it.
Just read the Olympic channel, because it's kind of cool.
That's the, yeah, the...
Honor around July 13th, 2017. Olympics channel HD will be available on channel 846 with our digital preferred tier Universal HD. 846 and 1419 will be ceasing. The self-installation kit's going up essentially $5.05 in price. Sprout HD will be added to the family tier on channel 927. RL TV will no longer be available on channels 125 and 1498.
Thank you. So that's great. We have minutes.
Motion to approve.
What's that, a minute? That's ready.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Someone tied. Lawrence, motion.
Motion signed, Lawrence. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? No executive assessment? Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.